Hello, everybody.
Greetings.
Did either of you hear if anyone was planning to show up in person here at State Street?
I did not.
I didn't either.
Alright, I'm gonna pop downstairs and check.
I know Mary and Jeremy are not going to be with us at all. I never heard specifically from Ed. Tom told me, but I don't, Tom Koch told me, but I don't remember what he said. He apologized for missing Monday. He just never, it never got on his calendar and I told him that never happens to me and he should be ashamed of himself.
Yep, me neither.
So Eric, I was just saying while you were, you stepped away. We know that Mary and Jeremy cannot make this work session. I don't know about Tom Koch.
I'm standing right here, so don't say anything negative.
Okay, he's a great guy.
Pulling up the big screen for Tom right now.
He's a great guy. I don't care what everybody else says. And I didn't hear from Ed. But thank you for getting that set up, Eric. My suggestion for how to best use this afternoon's time for as long as it may, may take is for Rob on behalf of himself and Jeremy to make a presentation about his, their, their map, perhaps giving some highlights of it. What they achieved in terms of deviations. And what areas, if any, may still be on their, on their radar to try to, to improve. And then to have Jean do likewise with her map. And Jean had sent me earlier today of, of, of sort of a list of, maybe you'd call them metrics about maps that would either in the map or as an attachment or a footnote would include some useful higher level information, for example, the overall deviation, the high district deviation, the low district deviation and maybe a breakdown of the number of districts that are, and maybe three or four tiers of, of deviation. So we'd get a sense from a, a very simple chart. What that looks like for people who may not, who will, once we send the tentative map out, won't be as accustomed to looking at the map and deriving that information from the map, even though much of that, if not all of it, is, is can be derived from the map. I'm working on a cover memo that I will get out to you all tomorrow morning. That has a few blanks in it in terms of dates. And as a placeholder that is going to be for descriptive, a descriptive paragraph or so about the actual tentative map that the board will have voted on when we send this stuff out. Chris and I and, and, and his staff are working on the supplemental for supporting materials that will go out. We had some good news from Legislative Council in that they're going to, we're going to be able to send a with a town Board of Civil Authority, a, not only the full map, but a, a blow up of the map for their, the district that we proposed for them. So it'll be more accessible, if you would. And last but certainly not least, it's my hope that in order to maintain our momentum, that we will be able to take a vote on Friday morning on the, on a tentative map that will take me a sometime to get in shape. To go out with the other materials that are being prepared, but if we are able to take a vote on Friday, that will give her enough time to get, and the, and the staff, other staff members enough time to get the, everything ready by either late Monday or Tuesday to go out, which would be keeping with our, our, our desired schedule. So as you noted from earlier, earlier email communication, I can't stay for that, for the rest of this work session, I will be following up with each of you tomorrow, I suspect. And my COVID Pfizer booster arm is starting to feel a little better.
That's good.
It didn't hurt going in. But so Chris, did you have anything you wanted, that I said you wanted to correct or illuminate?
I think you covered it, Tom. It's really, when we can get that mailing out is dependent on when we have a, a final map. So we're, we're waiting with bated breath for that vote of the, of the L A B and then hopefully we'll get a good communication out there on Monday, if all goes well. I'll have a draft of that, I think, ready for Friday. So the, or at the very latest for Monday morning, when, when we meet. Hopefully on Friday, then we can maybe have it pretty much approved on Friday, along with all of the the different information that we would propose to send to towns along with the proposed map. And get your
Another nice thing about getting a vote done on Friday is that it will give, give the, the board members a week or 10 days to maybe relax for a little while before the Boards of Civil Authority stuff come in and we have to get back on the, the Senate map horse and ride that one home across the finish line. Chris, I understand you might be going to a soccer game later today. Who's, who's playing in that?
The Northfield Dynamo's team, which my son is on, we're from Berlin, but he plays there. It's a sixth, fifth and sixth grade soccer in Callis. So it's not snowing, so I'm very happy to be going to a kid's soccer game, not in the snow.
Oh, it's more than not snowing. It's gorgeous. It's gorgeous. That'll be a nice drive.
I hear there's some pretty rough, rough, rough players over there in Callis.
You better watch out. Yeah, they can be tough.
Okay, well then I'm gonna turn this, not that this, I think needs moderating, but, but Chris, I'd ask you to sort of nudge things along if you could, and I'll check in tomorrow.
Sure. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you all. Bye.
So I joined late. I don't know. Is there other, other business to be done? Is, this is noticed as a work session.
Well, I think we're just, Jeannie and I are supposed to give a brief rundown of our, our maps.
Okay.
I, I don't think I'll take too long because Jeremy and I finished up last night around 11 o'clock with our, with our, with our consolidated, his map, my map, and I still need to digest some of, some of what's going on, but, but overall, you know, it, the numbers work. We don't have any, any district that exceeds the eight percent. There's one, but it can be fixed and that's, it's sort of a question of do we want to divide a town or leave it a little heavy?
Okay.
Uh, you know, ba- basically we, obviously the, the premise was we were looking for 150 member, single member districts. We started out with all of the towns that work as single member districts, that is, you know, single town, single member districts, which their, their number of Manchester being one, Castleton being, being another. So using them as sort of the, the baseline foundation for it, we started to build around it. The next priority was where can we take districts that are the same as they are today and still work and don't necessarily need to be changed. So after the first foundational blocks, that was the second foundational blocks we did. So as little disruption as, as we possible could, possibly could, in some cases where there are towns that are, we, we have a few towns that are slightly bigger than they used to be and no longer work as single districts such as Stowe, such as Fairfax. So we worked, worked into, in with Morrisville for a district there. What happened with Fairfax is actually quite nice. It's, uh, because Cambridge is just a little too small to be a single member district on its own. Fairfax is now just a little bit too big and there's a little squiggle where they're connected by Route 15 below the Lemoine River. That, that, if you take that away from Fairfax and put it in Cambridge, it's not very disruptive ways to, to, to make those two towns, two towns work. The place where we sort of had trouble and we all expected to have trouble was in, and for, you know, where Franklin County and Essex, and Chittenden County, particularly Essex Colchester. All of those towns have grown. So when you're squeezing the balloon, they all come in on one place. So we ended up with, uh, having to split, having a couple of splits in there with, uh, an Essex Colchester, and, um, yeah, an Essex Colchester district and an Essex Williston district. And I forget if we ended, I think we ended up with an Essex South Burlington district where they all sort of come, come together in, in that corner. We may have, we may have gotten rid of the Essex South Burlington district. Willis, yeah, there's a Williston South Burlington district, like where you're driving down Route 2 on Williston Road. There's a little bit of a a mix, a mix there. So I think we were pretty successful in where we did have to split towns like that in those areas that we found areas where there is cultural and economic continuity between the districts, like the, the, uh, the Essex Williston district is right there where Williston on 2A comes into Essex and they converge. There's a little bit of overlap on the border there. As I said, Williston Road between South Burlington and Williston, there's a little bit of, I mean, if, if you ever drive that, and I'm sure we all have a thousand times, uh, you really don't know where one ends and one begins unless you're paying really close attention. So those are the, those are the areas where we had problems and I think we did a pretty good job of, of solving them. Now, I know Jeremy sent around the, the PDFs of, of the map to everybody. If, if, if folks have had a chance to look at them and have questions, I'll do my best to answer.
Alright, so Jean or Tom, do you have any questions for Rob?
What I see looks pretty good. There are certainly things that I would suggest we do differently. But in general, this is a massive job and it's done pretty well.
Yeah, well, Tom, we're, we're always looking at suggestions for, for fixes. I mean, the fixes that I would look to make is if there's places where we can put, restore some town lines by, you know, making a, a small adjustment here and a small adjustment there. That, that's where my focus would be, but certainly open to any suggestions that you have, just knowing that they can create ripple effects.
Jean, did you have? Yeah, I mean, I, I, I did take just a peek at it, but I'll have to really, um, I'm glad we have the rest of today and tomorrow to take a look before Friday, because I do wanna, um, give it the time it deserves. But I did, I was curious and Tom Little alluded to this a little bit, some, some of the, some of the things that I think would be helpful, I can, you know, I could try to do it on my own, but you guys may already know this. In addition to the, you know, high and low deviations, kind of a sense about like I was trying to work on for my own map, how many districts are, are in fact only from say negative five to plus five? Percent and how many are past that in either direction or some other way to kind of get a sense? Because you can obviously have two, two maps that have roughly the same overall deviation or even roughly the same minimum to maximum, but could look, could be very different how that's distributed. So that, that would be kind of interesting, I think, to understand. If you, if you guys, you know, could, could get that. And the other thing I'm trying to work on for my own map also, and I would love to, to see it for yours, is a, a sort of a rundown of things like the, what you were just talking about, the town splits, like how many are newly split. I, you know, for my own, it, it isn't, it seems like a really straightforward question, but, but it, that it leads to other things that are relevant, like for example, I count 10 towns that are more than two, you know, their populations mean they have to have at least two members and, and they're too big for only two. So, so there's no question they have to be split, which is like a whole other category. So, so no matter what, you, you might've split them in more than I did or whatever, but that's sort of a different category. And then you have the others that you, that you or I, you split for different reasons, you know, to achieve whatever we were working on. So understanding that I think is kind of helpful. So that's what I'm working on also is, and I, for myself, split it into, or divided it into towns that were already split and maybe I made some changes or maybe I didn't, and then towns that I've newly split, because I think these are the kinds of questions towns themselves will clearly zero in on. So that, that was what I, I was working on. So you may not know the answers to that now, but that might be something be helpful.
Yep. No, I think that's, that's good. Yeah. There, there is a function in MapTitude and, and Jeremy's unfortunately the MapTitude jockey and I am not. Uh, but there's a function where you can go list from highest to lowest deviation. And so we did do a quick, quick look at that last night. And as I said, you know, everything's in there, but yeah, it would be, and I think it was pretty even. The median where we had heavy districts and, and light districts, it was fairly even between, we didn't do an exact count, but eyeballing it looked, it looked pretty similar. How many are in the, the five percent versus seven percent versus eight percent kind of thing? We didn't do that breakdown, but I guess that's another, that, that's something that you could do. I mean, we were really just focused on making sure everything was with, within the eight percent range and nothing, nothing went above or below that.
But there are, there are a few. I did see a couple.
Yeah, we had, we had one. Yeah, we had one that was heavy, I think. And, and, and we can, I think it's Weston is a town that we could end up splitting Weston and make that work pretty easily because the town next to it is light or the district next to it is light. That's just a question, how do we want to split that town in order to achieve that thing? Or do we want to leave it, leave it whole?
Mr. Bristo Johnson, would you like to make a comment?
Thank you. Um, so I just want to make another appeal for not splitting Burlington. It's not, it's not exactly a split, but there's two districts in Winuski that have the current map we have, but it seemed like the map that I saw from Rob Roper also had these two, two districts crossed over the Winuski River into Burlington. And I want to make two cases for, and I've, and I have, I have done, done a modification of the map and, and given you guys a link to it so that you could see what I'm talking about. And if it's okay with you, I could share my screen and just show you quickly the difference, but I won't do that if it's not okay with you.
We, we, we fixed, we fixed that on our map.
Oh, did you, did you adopt the changes that I suggested?
I don't know if we adopted exactly all the changes you suggested, but we adopted the Winuski change. So, so Winuski is, is its own two-member district.
Okay, so that's gonna be light and then that makes Burlington slightly heavy, but not too heavy. Yeah, okay, that's good. And the, the main reason, the other thing I was gonna make, I didn't make this case, but it's also has to do with the Senate districts. And so of course, 10 representatives makes for two senators. And so it's, it's likely that Burlington will probably be a single two senator district. I hope that that ends up being the case when you guys do the Senate map. Um, but I just, I just would have hated to see some people living on Riverside Avenue and people living on Grove Street having to vote in Winuski elections just because the, you know, as they do now, just because it, it overlapped over. And so I was trying to make the case not to do that.
Yep. I think, I think we fixed that and I, I, I can't imagine that anybody's gonna object to that. I think we'll probably get a lot of objectives to any map that we put forward, but I don't think anybody's gonna object to that.
Could, could you take a look at the map that I sent you? Um, just as I compared to maybe, because there was, there were some other issues up by, in the north end that I was also advocating about. Um, and so I kind of integrated both of those issues in that. But if you, if the map that you used to have and the map that I did aren't that much different either, but they are a little different, of course, because once you move that Winuski or once you move those two, the six, seven, this Chittenden six dash seven districts out, uh, um, the other ones had, the other part of the balloon had to expand into that. Um, and they had to do kind of evenly. Um, I don't know, I won't show it to you if you don't want, but I just, I have the, 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 the image right here, ready to go if you wanted to look at that.
If, if you could send that into board members, I think that would work better for them to
I, I mean, it's, it's District Builder links. I did send a link before to the board members. That's all it is. It's just a District Builder link.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks a lot for your input, Robert. It's really helpful.
I mean, it's, it's because I'm on the, I'm on the, I'm on your, I'm a counterpart to you guys, but I'm, I'm on the Burlington Ward redistricting committee. And so I'm thinking about these things myself and I'm using your District Builder template to look at the wards too. And that's also, and I, I mentioned this last time, um, but you should be aware of, in case you ended up splitting these two blocks, there's two blocks on the Redstone campus and on both your previous map and on my map, we put them in the same district, so it doesn't matter. But if they end up going in different districts, there is a 1,200 population discrepancy that you have to worry about. Uh, 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 and it's, it's the two, two Redstone Campus dorm districts and it's a big discrepancy. So in, if, if you're remapping, ended up splitting those two blocks and putting them in two different districts, you're gonna have a problem.
Robert, I just want to remind you that his map is not necessarily the map we're gonna be using.
Yeah, I understand. I know you're voting on it. I know.
Yes, right. And I'd like to talk about my map also.
Alright, I'd like to see your, Jean, I'd like to see your map. I'd like to see everybody's map. I'd only look at Burlington. I don't care what you do to the other towns.
Well, that is actually an important thing to remind you that we, we have to care. So
I know that.
So that's, yeah, but I did want you to know that it does sound like both of the maps that we are going to be looking on, looking at to vote on Friday do seem to have, because mine also, I, um, took the, was currently the Burlington portion of, that's in Chittenden six, seven, I, I, I moved that, reunited it with Burlington. So, so that part.
So it's in, you, you're splitting, in other words, you have more than 10 counts or 10 councils.
No.
You have exactly 10 representatives for Burlington. Okay, good. Then, then you moved it back. You didn't split Winuski.
I reunited the Burlington portion with Burlington.
Okay, so it's not six, seven anymore. Six, seven is in Winuski and stays in Winuski.
Correct.
Good. That, then I'm a happy camper, pretty much anyway.
I thought you would be. That's why I'm telling you.
Yeah, that was what I was agitating about. That's all. I wouldn't mind if you looked at my map because I did some stuff on the north end of Burlington that I think because I live in the north end, um, that I think might be good to look at. There's, I, I, the, the existing map that we're using right now is icky, in my opinion. But that, that's all I can say. It's your job, not my job, but I hope that you do take a look at my map. It's a District Builder map and I took it from Rob Roper's, uh, previous October 5th map and I changed it around. Anyway, I hope you do look at that and maybe take, take some suggestions from it. Anyway, thank you.
Thanks, Robert.
Yeah.
Any more comments on the, the Rob and Jeremy map? Or do we want to move on to, to Jean's map? Alright, take it away.
Great, thank you. Um, so I did send around and it's the same as what Rob said in the, in the sense that I, I don't expect people to have studied it in the, a few hours that they've had to look, take a look. Um, I, I had sent versions of this before. It's not a lot different than, um, the draft that's currently on the Secretary of State's website. That is, you know, the, the enforcement board area. Uh, but there are a few, a couple of changes and I did complete, as we were just discussing earlier, a few minutes ago, the division, I had, I had left to the end, the division of the more metropolitan areas, but I did go in and just put in a division that made sense to me for certain reasons with, with the understanding that if my map is chosen on whatever map is chosen, the next step will be input from folks closer to these regions and know, know best where, where the lines might be. I didn't want to pretend to say that, um, I knew exactly, you know, that this was a better line versus another line. It was just, I wanted to have something that we could start a conversation with. And but in terms of, um, the overall approach, just as a reminder, because I thought that was helpful, the way, um, Rob talked about what, how Jeremy and he kind of thought about their map. I did start with our current enacted House map for the state and I looked for the problem areas, which weren't that hard to find. That is to say where, uh, the, the region had grown faster than other parts of the state or had grown more slowly or even had shrunk and and then just thought about ways to improve those areas so that they would have a, um, you know, much smaller deviation and obviously a, a permissible deviation is, is what I was going for, whatever, whatever, you know, that turns out to be. Obviously that's not got, can be any different between Rob's and Jeremy's and mine, that is, the areas of the state that are, were difficult to deal with are gonna be, were the same. I, um, I actually did, I think I created only one new double member district. Mine does have both single and double member districts. It has six, I believe it's 62 single member districts and 44 double member districts. I think I only created one and it was kind of, it was, it could, I could, I could go back. This was something I, I, I did up in Franklin. This was Rob earlier talked about Georgia and Fairfax area and they, they're each too big to be their own single member district now. So there are a couple of ways to deal with that. My initial thought was, well, I take off a piece of each of them and give it to someone else, which of course up there, you know, you start to get into a problem because everything's kind of a little bit too big. But so, but in any case, that was my original idea. And I thought, well, there's no way to avoid that, to take a piece of each of them away. But then I realized, well, there is a way to avoid it, which is you take a piece of one of them away and then you combine the two, what's remaining into a two-member district. They may not like it. We'll find out and there are ways, you know, if, if, if my map goes out to towns, we'll find that out. Uh, but that was one, I think that was the only time I did that, where I decided instead of taking a piece of two different towns away, I would only take a piece from one and combine the remainder as a, as a kind of a solution. Um, I think the other challenging area was Rutland City and, um, and Rutland, you know, because it's, it is I, you know, it's possible to, to divide it really I, you know, it's possible to, to divide it really carefully and not have to bring in other people, and of course, Rutland Town is already itself doesn't quite have enough, and so that was a challenge. I ended up bringing in a little bit of Rutland Town and, um, and also a little bit of Mendon into Rutland Town. So that area was, was definitely a challenge, just for the opposite kind of dynamic to the Burlington area. Uh, what else? I did actually, and this came up in a prior discussion, so if you, if you're thinking of the current map or the current distribution of representatives around the state, in order to accommodate the growth or relative growth in population in the northwest part of the state, especially Chittenden County and, and parts of Franklin, um, those representatives have to come from somewhere, and so my map shows an overall net reduction of one representative in the Wyndham area and one in the um Essex, Caladonia, Orleans area, so that then I got on two additional seats. One that, um, visually, it's, it, it sort of overlaps Williston and South Burlington, and I think, Rob, you were talking about this same region earlier. Um, it's kind of where you're not even sure which you're in, so it is, it isn't a bad choice to have an overlapping district there, at least you know, that it seems at least a, a reasonable option. And then the Essex, um, Essex area as well, and I, so I, so Essex, um, the three districts that make up Essex and Westford account for five right now, five representatives, but I've added one. I pulled in some of Milton, which has to go somewhere also, cuz it's too big for two, and also a, a, a portion of a, of a neighborhood in Colchester that apparently, right, it's a right next, it's a part of the same neighborhood in essence, supposedly, is what, what I understood. So, so anyway, same kinds of questions trying to solve, you know, solve them in different ways, in part because I wasn't trying to eliminate all the double-member districts or not create any, so that certainly is different. My, I did get a maximum deviation of seven and a half percent and a minimum of seven, negative seven point eight, and I was, I was happy about that. And, um, and, and, and the majority, the, the large majority is, is quite a bit smaller than that, so I, so that I was also pretty happy about. So that's pretty, um, that's, that's, that pretty much covers it. Um, you can, um, if you, if you zoom in on the maps, at first, they sometimes look fuzzier. When you zoom in, you, it actually gets clearer, which is, was the opposite of what I was expecting. But it is true, it's hard to get down to the very, very, um, at each town level, it's gonna be hard to get a lot of detail. And so eventually, each town, and I think we were saying this, maybe Tom was saying this earlier, or Chris, maybe you were saying it, that there will be the op, the, the, the opportunity for, for all the towns to see their own district in a large enough format to really see closely what's going on.
That, that's correct. Um, it's our understanding that we'll be able to take the final map to two map and export a PDF of each individual district that has quite a bit of detail to it. It's high resolution, it can be printed large, it can be zoomed in on digitally. Um, it should give towns all the sufficient level of detail to know exactly where the lines are.
Yeah. And so that's, that's the quick summary. Happy to answer any questions or to research questions if I can't answer them.
Sure. Tom or Rob, do you have any, any comment on this map? Questions?
Jean. Uh, probably won't surprise you that the first town I looked at was Berrytown. And uh you have a chunk of Williamstown uh connected to Berrytown. Number one, I don't think it's necessary. Berrytown by itself falls within your uh parameters. It doesn't, doesn't extend uh the deviation boundaries any, and uh that piece of Williamstown, uh, and for that matter, most of Williamstown is very little to do with Berrytown. Uh, there are no real social ties or anything else, so, um, it, it would not be popular. Um, so we'll see.
I appreciate your comment, Tom. You know, that was one of the, that was one of the districts I was, that, that currently, the issue wasn't so much Berrytown, although I, I was hoping to decrease the deviation there. It was, it was also because, um, I split the current Orange One district, which just seemed like one of the current districts. It's kind of unwieldy. It's a two-member district. It's got a lot of, it's got six towns in it that I'm not sure how coherent a district that is. So part of the decision-making was not just because of Berrytown, it was because I had a district that was too big, that needed to lose some population. So it was kind of a combined effort to decrease the population of one and there, and then increase the population of another as a balance. So, but rest assured that that district is a self-contained issue, so could go, always go back to Orange One as it is now. So I, one of the things I, I, I mean, Rob, you may have noticed this also, but, um, it's always nice when you have an alternate solution that doesn't affect anything else.
Yeah.
You know, you're like, well, I'm, I'm, or a little, yeah, like, I'm not sure I like this one better, but we'll try this one, and if I have to go back to another one, it's not gonna be like, oh, God, that's gonna cause a ripple effect down, you know, all the way down the state. So that is something that could be, could be put back in as Orange One and leave you guys alone, Tom, so just so you know.
Well, we heard from uh people from that six, six-town district, uh, they don't care for it, very mildly, particularly the people of Carlin.
Yeah.
Put that into two single-member districts seems, seems appropriate. I think what that would require is getting the town of Chelsea.
Oh, of Chelsea? Is that what you said? I didn't hear you. Is it?
Sorry, could be wrong.
Oh. Yeah, I'm sure there are, yeah, I'm sure there are other solutions possible there. That was one that I, I just tried, and so we'll see, we'll see how that goes. It's not a make or break for the whole map, that's for sure, but I appreciate your comment.
The other thing I realized is, uh, doing something with Stowe is difficult. But you put a chunk of Worcester in with uh Stowe, and I'm not sure there's any way to get there. That's a, I, I think mostly the Worcester range are not as stable as you, uh, that you have there, and uh.
Well, you are, you are correct, Tom. Worcester's kind of out in the cold already, uh, because they're currently in a district with Morristown uh and Woodbury, and one of the things that we did in our map is we got those guys back on the proper side of the mountain range, but it's, it's not unprecedented.
Well, in the nineteen ninety reaportment, Middlesex, Worcester, and Elmore were a district, and that worked pretty well. Um, then in two thousand, uh, I think it was Peter Shumlin's idea to uh connect Middlesex and, and uh East Montpelier, which are two towns that other than going to U thirty-two together, I think have little to do with each other. Um, so the, the, the people in East, in, in Middlesex at least have been unhappy with that for twenty years because it pretty much ensures that their representatives will be elected from East Montpelier and has for all, all this time. Um, so, looking. Pardon me?
I just wanted to, to clarify. So the portion I took is kind of where one hundred, I took a portion of Stowe and I added it to, um, to Lemoyle, Washington, which on the Morristown side.
So yours is a two-member district with Stowe, Morristown, Elmore, and Worcester.
Um, yes, so in other words, it's basically what the current Lemoyle, Washington district is, but with a piece of Stowe with good-sized piece, because you guys grew too fast. I mean, you know, what are you doing up there? Anyway, so, um, almost eight hundred people. Uh, I mean, it could be less, it could be less, but you know, I was trying to balance, um, yours being too big and, and so forth, but anyway. And so it's the portion I chose, I, I, I mean, I admittedly, I, I wasn't on the ground when I chose it. I was looking at a map, and, but I did choose a section of one hundred that is right up next to Morristown. It's not the, uh, in Worcester, that's all. I just wanted to clarify.
Theoretically, theoretically, Stowe could elect three people to the legislature. I could sell that.
Oh, you, because of your own and, uh, and then the two over there.
Yeah, two people from the hollow.
Enough. Yeah, you might change your mind about those two-member districts. Start to look a little better. Anyway.
That isn't it?
Yeah, that was my goal, yeah. So, um, no, but I appreciate, I appreciate it. Um, I, you know, there's a lot that about these districts that is hard to know unless you're on the, you're there.
Well, I appreciate you getting this done because I got started and get so far about a third of it, and I haven't had uh time to do anything further on it, so uh I could be throwing stones. I, I didn't do nearly as, as much work as you three people did.
Rob, did you have any questions or arguments, Jean?
Uh, I will probably save it for Friday, because as I said, I haven't even fully digested my own map yet, and, and I haven't given Jeanie's the attention it deserves, but but uh kudos to her for, for doing that, pretty much on her own. Uh, it, it, it was tough enough having a partner in Jeremy, but uh, but that was a lot of work that you put into it. I'm, I'm impressed.
Oh, well, you know, uh, one of the things that ended up being easier than I thought it would be, or at least easy is the wrong word. It, it, it ended up being advantageous to get into the Excel um work, even though it was kind of horrifying, just, just to get a spreadsheet for that long. But then it made the map, it did make the mapping a lot easier, so, um, especially with the new technology. I, I would, I think I would have found it a lot harder to be going back and forth, trying new things, but only on the map. I think that would have been even more stressful for me, so, but thank you, I appreciate that. Um, and I'm gonna keep working on, um, what I was mentioning earlier, just a kind of a rundown of questions like, um, how many towns are split and how many are newly split? Um, and, oh, I had, did already work out, cuz this wasn't difficult. I have thirty, thirty of mine are actually no change from before. They're the same district as before. I, I originally thought it was gonna be more, but then it, it came out to be thirty.
What, what is to the towns, uh? We might, on, on those towns that will have to be split, um, indicate that we understand that there may be a preference for a single two-member district. I'm thinking of Berrytown, which would, in fact, like to remain exactly the way it is. But, um, indicate to the towns that there may be a decision uh at some point to go with single-member districts, and they should take that into account, and please submit a plan for splitting the town, even if you.
So I guess if, if that's the way the vote goes on Friday, uh, we'd like further direction from the board as to what should be in that email out to towns if it ends up being the single-member district map, whether you wanna add some additional language about single-member districts.
Yep, I'm sure, I'm sure we'll have plenty to say after the vote.
Okay. And Jean, you, so you were mentioning some of the things that you thought were important for maybe for the board, maybe for the towns to know about number, or number of changes from existing districts, number of new splits. Um, are there other things? You're gonna tally those for, for your map, is that what?
Yeah, I have been working on, um, on the town, you know, thinking about the towns that are split. Again, not as much interested. I realize, you know, Burlington it, it, it is of interest to present company and others how Burlington is split, but the fact that it needs to be split is, is kind of out of our control, cuz it's obviously too big. It needs to be split in some way. The ones that I think that are, are somewhat more interesting are just from the point of view of, of what's going on in a particular plan, district plan, is how many are split in maybe a new way than they were before? Um, and, and how many, um, how many towns maybe are split into two pieces or three pieces, maybe some are split, you know, into more than two pieces? Um, how many cross-county borders? Those are some of the things I'm working on now. I did have six, I noticed, um, six towns that are, there's a portion that was split off in the, in the current map, and I'm returning them, reuniting them. Um, so that's a, a joining, if you will. Uh, look, that kind of thing. So that's what I'm, I'm working on, and maybe there's others I haven't thought of, but those are the things I'm, I'm working on. In addition, sorry, and then the other was this issue of, um, getting a sense of the deviation, whether it's, um, beyond just the maximum and minimum, but kind of are, you know, how, how much of, how many of the districts are at those outer edges versus closer to zero?
Okay.
That kind of thing.
I think that's something we can volunteer to do on both maps. Um, is say, how many are within the one to three percent? How many are within the four to six? How many are within the seven to nine? Is that?
Something like that, yeah.
Like, that would be helpful. And Rob, I know you and Jeremy have put in a lot of hours and have other things to do, actually, than count, count up uh changes on your maps, but is that something that you and or Jeremy could work on? Said maybe you need a little bit of help with that, as far as how many towns are split, how many um changes have been made to current districts, things like that?
I can go through and start looking at it, but uh.
Let us know if you need some assistance with that.
I've got a bit, a busy day tomorrow, and then we're, we're in, in on Friday, so.
Okay.
Well, not just with work, but I have a rotary board meeting and a rotary dinner meeting that I have to preside over, cuz our president is away. Um, so my evening is kinda shot tomorrow night, too.
Okay.
I, I guess in part, I think it's good that the board has kind of the same information about the two plans that are gonna be, you know, in contention. That's, that was part of my motivation there, too.
And the other thing that we can do is, um, ask Legislative IT to run those reports again on compactness and contiguity. There are some, some measurements there that might be helpful for you to take a look at as you, as you look at the two maps.
Great, appreciate that.
So, so Chris, with the time that I have, what would be more helpful to you guys? Going through and looking at the borders and trying to count them, or putting together some, uh, sort of more prosaic um explanations for why we did some of the stuff we did?
That's a good question for the board. I, I'm, I'm not sure what is, will be most helpful to your decision-making, but like Jean said, maybe if it's the same thing and on both maps, that'll, that'll be the best thing. So what is it that you're planning to do, Jean?
I mean, I, I'm just, it, it, I mean, I don't wanna, I don't wanna make presumptions about what seems time-consuming or is time-consuming, but it, it hasn't been too hard just to count up, cuz you, you know your map pretty well. I mean, I guess in some ways it's a little harder, cuz you, Rob, you and Jeremy kind of put this together, and maybe, maybe you don't know it as well as some of the others you've worked on, but you do know probably pretty well, oh, yeah, we have a part of a town here, and we have a part of a town here, and so on, just kind of a running total of the towns that had to be split.
Yeah.
Would be great, I think. Not this, I mean, the number. It doesn't even have to be the towns.
No. If, if we're do, if we're doing that, um, that's okay. I have a one of the, I think there's a distinction between towns that are, are split and joined with another town and towns that are split only within themselves. Like, I don't consider, we have Like I don't consider, we have 10 single member districts in Burlington, but I don't consider Burlington split because they're.
Yeah, I agree with you that, and that's, that's why I was saying, um, I mean, you know, it's, it's, it's useful information, but it's not. That's a little different than what I'm talking about. Cause though that has to be split, granted, you split it into 10 pieces and I didn't. Cause I have a few that are two-member districts or whatever, but that's less interesting to me than the challenges of, okay, what do you do with a town that's not quite big enough to be its own district? Or that's too big to be its own district?
Yep.
Okay. That's great.
All right. That's about it.
Excellent.
Too nice to be, too nice to be looking at squares. No, it is, it is gorgeous. And, uh, but this is good. This is helpful. I'm glad we, um, were able to just get to this point.
Thanks everyone for your work on this. And, um, I guess we started with the quorum, although we've lost a quorum. Eric, if you could just note the time that we're adjourning.
Got it. Although I don't think, yeah. Okay.
For your notes anyway.
Good luck with the soccer game, Chris.
Thanks a lot. Go enjoy the outside, everybody. Bye.
Take care.
Take care.